Our next agenda item is 4.1, Information and Outreach: School Board Recognition. Superintendent Pecal?
Thank you. I wonder if Ms. Sam, you could both bring up the slide and then, and then we have got for our board members here, a small token of appreciation. And let's also hand out the equally heartfelt but somewhat less, less delicious certificates that we're sharing. We've got chocolate for board members. It is School Board Recognition Month, and the slide that is on the screen is just one measure of the impact that all of you have as the leaders of this school district. And let's just be honest, it's a little tough for me to do this because I work for all of you, but I'm not saying this just because I work for all of you.
Suck up.
Collectively, school boards direct more than $600 billion annually to teach more than 50 million students. And it is a tough time to be a school board member. I think it is clear to say that in the history of American education, there's never been a time when school districts have been more at the fulcrum of social, economic, societal issues than is the case at this time. And Rochester is very fortunate to have a board with seven leaders who have different perspectives, different life experiences, different priorities, but all of whom are really, really serious about the work that we're doing. And so I was thinking about a way to capture what I see as kind of the through line across all seven of your perspectives that you bring to this board. And I really do think it comes down to a passionate commitment to children. And that reminded me of, not a research study, as I usually pull out, but a quote from the Spanish and Puerto Rican cellist, conductor and composer Pablo Casals. And so, yeah, that was just for the music. No, but this is a great quote that I hadn't pulled out for a while, but I really do think this, this encapsulates this board and many boards that do very difficult work that not only is as complex and involves hard choices, but that sometimes can be really personally challenging as you take personal hits on behalf of the school system. So Casals said at one point in his very long and distinguished life, quote, "Each second we live is a new and unique moment of the universe, a moment that will never be again." And what do we teach our children? We teach them that two and two make four, and that Paris is the capital of France. When will we also teach them what they are? We should say to each of them, "Do you know what you are? You are a marvel. You are unique. In all the years that have passed, there has never been another child like you. Your legs, your arms, your clever fingers, the way you move. You may become a Shakespeare, a Michelangelo, a Beethoven. You have the capacity for anything. Yes, you are a marvel. And when you grow up, can you then harm another who is like you, a marvel? You must work. We must all work to make the world worthy of its children." And I really do believe this board works every day to make this district worthy of its children. And so, thank you for your leadership. We salute you for School Board Recognition Month. And you can even eat your chocolate now if you want. But thank you. At least ask the cabinet to join me in a bit of recognition.
Well, between our speaker and that, I didn't think I was going to start this meeting by crying, but we're done. Item, thank you. Item 4.2 is Rochester Public School Foundation Recipients. Superintendent?
Thank you. I see Matt getting up, and we are thrilled to have you here again. The Rochester Schools, Rochester Public Schools Foundation is an indispensable community partner. So welcome you to both introduce yourself and share with us what you and your colleagues have been up to.
Yeah. So I'll talk loudly just in case the mic doesn't work, because I see it doesn't stand very well. My name is Matt Logan. I am the current Rochester Public Schools Foundation President. We came here twice a year to basically distribute grants, and I'm hoping that at least a few of you are here tonight and come up and do a much better job than I can quickly talking about what those grants were. But for those of you who don't know, the Rochester Public School Foundation is basically a nonprofit to help, you know, connect the community and the schools. And what I like to think of is give teachers and other educators a chance to do something that maybe there isn't normal funding for. And to do that, they go through this process, apply for grants and go, and hopefully get money from the foundation. Basically, the main activity, and one of the biggest activities that we do twice a year, is giving out these grants. Since 1988, when it was actually pulled together, we've done over $650,000 in grants. Most of our funding right now comes from individual donations. We do some Recognize a Teacher and other things like that. We have had some fundraisers, and we do hope to actually bring back the haunted hallways for 2025. So that could be interesting, another idea, way to come and get money. The funds have been donated over the years. Most of these are actually before my time, only having been part of the foundation for the two and a half years now. But you can kind of quickly read, they were made for specific purposes. And a lot of times, as these grants come in, one of the tougher things we have to do is decide which of these funds would best support the grant that's being asked for. At this point, for the spring/summer cycle, we actually awarded $10,955 to five innovative projects at four schools over the district. Basically, I think we had 10 total that were, came in, which is pretty normal. Projects were selected by the grant committee. And by the way, if you're willing to be part of that, we're always looking for people to help us grant or rate and award these grants as they come along. Project directors are actually then asked at some point in the future to come back. And we usually come back and have them present on what the grant and what they've been able to do with those funds. So with that, I think we'll get to the important part, which is the grant recipients. And it's kind of showing up a little bit strange here, but I believe our first recipient, Guy, didn't, wasn't able to make it tonight. But basically, what they were doing, and we're providing funding for some new cutting edge, as he put it, but basically laser cutters so that they could do a little bit more hands-on industrial and commercial arts curriculum. So Guy unfortunately wasn't here, but, and I actually, as part of the slide, didn't put the exact amount, but we're going to just keep going because I want to be efficient and use the board's time. Our next one actually went to the Elementary School Counseling Library. And Angela, did you make it? I would love for you to come up and talk quickly on what you're doing with the money.
So the grant that I wrote for in the spring was for an elementary school counseling career library that would benefit all K-5 students, including online. And this is in line with the RPS strategic plan on building post-secondary pathway, pathways. And it's also in line with the American School Counseling Association's mindset and behavior standards. So it would include two books per grade level K-5, per each student, school counselor. And the stories would complement our ZELLO curriculum and would provide introductions or supplement lessons or even extension lessons. And ZELLO is our K-12 curriculum, and it was piloted last year by my school, Sunset Terrace, and four other elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. And this year, now, all of the schools are receiving the ZELLO curriculum K-12. So it's really to build knowledge and skills and plans that leads to future success for our students. And at the elementary, it's really just building the foundation. So students are exploring careers. They're looking at their interests, their skills, and really learning about how their current learning fits into the world of work later. It, ZELLO provides many hands-on, highly interact, it's highly interactive, it's developmentally age-appropriate lessons. And then this year, our families will also have access to what their students are learning. The career pathways include building and fixing, health, helping, creative, nature and business. And we really hope, as an elementary school counseling group, that the books and the stories will help break down some of the stereotypes of jobs that students may see themselves in and increase their competence, improve connections between their strengths and their passions. And our school counseling team is very thankful and looking forward to accessing the grant from the Rochester Public School Foundation so that we can use these books to enhance the ZELLO across the district and to, again, build that foundation for post-secondary career pathways for our elementary students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our third one, Julie, did you, come on up, Julie. I'll let you talk through quickly.
Good evening. Thanks for having us, and thank you very much for the grant. I'm Julie Ace. I'm the Instructional Coach at Jefferson Elementary. And our grant is Building Mathem-, Building Brilliance in Mathematical Minds at Jefferson. And what we're doing is we're enhancing our elementary curriculum math instruction with enriching it with Tang Math. And what this allows us to do is provide more enriching experiences for our K-2 students. A big part of this, the resources that Tang Math provides us, is professional development for our teachers. Now, I know you're all aware, we do a lot. We've got the Read Act, and we're doing a lot with building professional development in reading. We haven't had the opportunity yet to do that in math, and this allows us to do that at our site. There's a lot of modeling going on and really thinking about taking the students from the concrete to the pictorial, to the abstract. There's a lot of talk about metacognition, even in kindergarten, thinking about our thinking. How is that working, giving student voice to the mathematics and how they're thinking? So that's been really a quite a fun and exciting experience for us at Jefferson to be able to do this. And we invite you, any of you, at any time to come see us as we make mathematics joyful in our classrooms. So thank you again. Thank you.
Next, Brandy, Literacy for All, Braille.
Well, I will repeat the thank you so much. We are so excited to use some funds at Bishop for something exciting. And Brandy beats, media specialist and student success coach at Bishop. Our project is Braille and letting kids experience Braille. So this aligns with our mission to inspire, challenge, empower all students with the knowledge and skills to reach their full potential. I feel this project will inspire our students to see challenging, learning to read can be presided and vision impaired children. It will challenge them to grow as readers and writers using Braille and give them some knowledge about how our vision impaired in our community grow and prosper using this literacy system. This grant focuses on a unique learning experience. It extends our learning about how books work, how they can teach us or transport us, and how everyone can learn from and enjoy books. I was inspired to investigate the funding for this from a teacher asking for a Braille book for a student that had a low vision person in their family. And so I ordered them so that they would have an opportunity to see them. And I had never held a Braille book, actually. And so I, of course, ordered them to my house because Amazon. And my family was so taken with them. We all had to explore them, and it just seemed like such a creative way to engage kids in another way of using books. The specific outcomes I expect from our student are positive attitude toward vision impaired in our community, building awareness around literacy for people with low vision, and can help promote a positive way that those with different abilities can participate in the same activities. I'm hopeful this lesson can enhance our empathy for anyone navigating a disability. So this project can be implemented in all of our media classes. I'm putting together a kit so that all of my team can use that with all students in the district if they so choose. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ben, did you make it? There we go. Planetarium Portable.
Thanks. Hello, my name is Ben Jocelyn, and I am the Planetarium Director at Mayo High School for the Planetarium. The Planetarium is the longest operating, continuously operating planetarium in the state of Minnesota. It's been open since 1966. For those of you who don't know what a planetarium is, it's a large domed room where, in the past, there's been a big star ball. That's one, one light in the middle of a big steel ball that shoots off stars, and you can see them. Now, it's a 4K digital projector, and it shows us a lot of amazing things. We have about 19, last year, we had over 19,000 students come through the Planetarium with 621 different shows and visits. So it's a very well-used Planetarium. Now, next to the Planetarium, a lot of people don't know, is there's a room that has a big stationary hard plastic globe that is also digital projection up into the globe and projects it from the rear. That globe does not get as much use as we're paying for it. So what I want to do, and luckily, the Rochester Public School Foundation generously awarded enough money for us to make that portable. And so what we're going to do is, with the help of some students and some engineering community members, which this community has lots of, thankfully, is we're going to go ahead and make that a portable globe, bringing it from school to school to school for maybe schools that can't afford to get on the bus, to come back over to Mayo High School, perhaps students who can't leave their classrooms for medical reasons or other reasons. So it'll be a good, good use in the community, getting a lot more use as a portable globe than others. We can also use it in community events and just for any times that we need to. The things that we can see on it are like the planet Earth, the changes in different geology, we could change in the weather, climate, different patterns that are going on, on that globe as well. We can model it. We can also model different planets and moons, atmospheres on those other ones. We can dive down and see those other things. And there's also different presentations that are given to us by different colleges and universities that use their globe also to teach. And so it's a very, it's a very good, good method of teaching. And I'm very happy, very thankful that the Rochester Public School Foundation was able to provide this award for us. Thanks.
As I said, there's a few ways we get money. One of the big ways that we've been doing in the last year is the honor of staff member. And you can see that this year, we had a pretty good number of honored staff members since the last presentation. So we just wanted to highlight those. The next grant cycle, Melissa is actually our biggest preparer of this, and she's actually working to get it out and communicate it pretty soon. Some of the other important things, and I, unfortunately, Superintendent knows this, I've been looking for new board members. At this point, we have basically six. We might have a possible two more coming. We have some board members here that have actually been on the board as well. But if any of you are interested or know someone who might be a good fit, basically, it's hard to take us to the next step when you just don't have the bandwidth, right? Most of our time is just spent doing what we do, which is the grant cycles. And we'd like to see that happen and kind of go there. So anybody who has great money looking for funding, asking for grants, things like this, that would be great. We're grateful to the school district. And if you need any more information, track me down after the meeting, go out to our website, emails out there and everything else. Would love to see some more faces and hopefully have an even bigger impact in the future to what we do for the schools today. With that, any quick questions?
Board members?
Can we just give a round of applause to the recipients?
Absolutely. Well, I know that the resources that come through the money of the grants is welcome, but one of the things I enjoy about Rochester Public School Foundation and the spotlight you allow is for us to hear the passion and the energy from these teachers who are working within the structure of our curriculum and our goals and our mission, but looking to enhance that any way that they can. So we really do appreciate the partnership. And I think it's fair to remind that if they do go to www.rpsf.org, there is a place to donate.
There is absolutely a place to donate right on the page.
Great.
So, but if you have a problem or difficulty, send me an email. We'll figure it out one way or another. We'd love to take money, so.
Awesome.
Anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Our next item, 4.3, is Hy-Vee Cash for Students Recognition. Superintendent?
Thank you. I see Andy Croxton, our Director of Finance, coming up. It looks like Chad Launderville from Hy-Vee is there. We want to thank you in advance for the incredible partnership that Hy-Vee makes possible year after year after year. So.
Absolutely. And I'm really just here to introduce Chad and to thank him from the perspective of the finance department for all of the wonderful opportunity you provided to many, many schools over the several years that we've been doing this. Chad has a short presentation, and will provide everybody with an update of what the number was for last year. So, thank you, Chad.
Thank you. My name's Chad Launderville. I'm the District Store Director for Hy-Vee here in Rochester. And presenting to you guys the Cash for Students for the 2023-2024 school year. To give a little background, it's a fundraising program. It's active across all the Hy-Vee stores here in Rochester. This last year was our seventh year doing this program in Rochester. In 2022 and 2023, we had 25 schools participate. This last year, it dipped down to 22, so we missed a few schools. Part of the program is for every dollar that a customer spends at Hy-Vee, and we collect their receipt, or the school collects their receipt, they get, excuse me, for every $250, the school gets $1 back. And we're going to be doing it again this year. It started on August 26, and it goes through May 30. And so they get, the students, the parents can save their receipts, take them to the school, they bundle them, they give us a number at the end, and then we can go ahead and present a check to the school. So kind of go back through a little bit of history here. In 2020 to 2021, we had just over $2 million in receipt totals. And that donation total was $8,200 to the schools. In 2021 to 22, it was 2.3 million in receipt totals, and that was just over $9,000. 2022 to 2023, $2.6 million in receipts, and then that total was $10,500 back to the schools. And 2024, we dipped down just a little bit in the receipt total. It was just over 2.5 million, but we are awarding $10,200 back to the, back to the schools. So that's, that's a huge deal for, for us to be able to give back to the community. I'm going to give the top three schools here, and they are number three, Longfellow Elementary. They're going to receive a check for $1,040. Number two is Sunset Terrace, and they're $1,173. And the number one school this year was Washington Elementary, and they're going to get $1,193. And so they'll also receive an additional $150 for each of their PTA from this program. So just a great program, and we're glad to do it. And we want to see those numbers grow every single year. And it can be, any school can be a participant of it. So that's all I have.
That's great. Thank you. Director Barlow?
Chad, Superintendent, how are our schools made aware of the program? And then, secondly, how can we encourage residents who may not have children or grandchildren enrolled in our schools to drop their receipts to our schools?
Thank you, Director Barlow. That's a great point. We send it out through our bulletin every year to administrators. There's a lot of, there's a constituency in schools of certain people who know about it as well. But we could do some further messaging to families, actually. So that's a really interesting idea, meaning from the central level. I think, I think our schools do that. But we could do that from the district level, kind of step that game up as well. I don't know if there's any other.
Yeah, I mean, we want to see the number grow 100%. We want to see more people obviously shop with us. And if we do that, and you can get the receipts to you guys, we get to pay, pay a bigger sum out to the schools, and that helps, that's a win-win-win for everybody.
And I think the answer to your second question is that they could drop their receipts off at their neighborhood school, whatever school they're driving by, just to stop in the office and hand it, hand it over to the office manager, and then it would be added to the school's receipt total.
If I can also say, in addition to this, I want to thank you for the work experience that many of our students get at Hy-Vee. Whenever I go in there, it's always under scrutiny because they're like, ooh, this is Superintendent buying milk or something. And I had an interesting conversation the other day in the checkout aisle about the cellphone ban. And one of our students was like, basically kind of positive, but I don't know if they were just being nice because they were at work. But seriously, you do give a lot of our students a really great experience, maybe their first in the world of work. And I say that as a stepparent of a kid who worked at Hy-Vee. So it's a great additional contribution, obviously helps your business, but it really introduces a lot of those young people to the idea that, you know, customer is always right, and you got to be on time, and you got to think creatively and solve problems and things like that. So it's always fun for me to walk into one of your stores and see a lot of RPS kids.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Board members, good?
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
So we have two recognitions tonight. The first is Community Schools Facilitators Week. This week, September 24th through 28th, is Community School Facilitators Appreciation Week. Our community school facilitators are integral to building the pathways to success that our RPS community schools provide for students. They are the leaders who work collaboratively to marshal, align, and unite the assets, resources, and capacities that support students and families. Community school facilitators are essential to creating, strengthening, and maintaining partnerships between community schools and our community partners. They are a reliable and trusted presence for every student or family member who needs a listening ear, who has a problem that needs solving, or needs to find a school or community resource. We thank our community school facilitators, Intisar Khan at Franklin, Lisa Becker at Riverside, Julie McLaren at Gage, Sweden Patel at Rochester ALC, and Aaron Vasquez at John Marshall for all the work they do. And we encourage all Rochester Public Schools' students, parents, staff, and community members to share in this celebration of Community School Facilitators Appreciation Week. Our second appreciation is National Custodian Day. On October 3, we will celebrate National Custodian Day. Here in Rochester Public Schools, the work of our custodial staff is vital in ensuring that students and staff have safe, clean, and healthy spaces to learn and work. Our buildings represent a significant investment on the part of the public that must be kept clean and in good shape. Custodians are responsible for the daily care and safe operation of all facilities and buildings on a year-round basis. And anyone who has visited our district buildings knows that custodial staff are a big part of creating a positive atmosphere in every one of them. Our custodians care about our staff and our students. They are always there to reach out with a helping hand and are often the go-to person for members of our Rochester community who use our buildings before or after school hours. The next time you are in an RPS building and see a member of our custodial staff, make sure you stop to thank them, as we do tonight, for everything that they do. Item 4.5 is the Board Member Committee Updates. Does any board member have updates on their committees or any other things to share?
I have one.
Oh, Director Barlow, sure.
I had the opportunity this past week to attend a award ceremony at Banbury Elementary. And I just wanted to report out the excitement that I sensed and observed. While there is a new principal there, he's not new to the district, which is not the most significant thing I observed. What really was, was that of a high-level school environment that en- thing I observed. What really was, was that of a high-level school environment that embraced and understood the fact that there were students, peers there who heard, listened differently than others. And, and they were asked to, instead of clapping their hands, to go like that. And initially, the students didn't, some of the students didn't hear that or recognize that, and they clapped their hands, to include some of us as adults as well. I wasn't one of them. But what I observed was the principal being supportive, teachers being supportive. No one got angry, you know, they just kind of, you know, modeled the behavior. And, and so, we went from where there was audible clapping at the start of the assembly to toward the end. Everyone was on point, they understood, and I thought the potential that is present within our schools, when our kids are given an opportunity to excel, to be met where they are, to be challenged, and when the expectation is there, they rise to that level of expectation. And then, the final thing I observed was that of the PBIS already in place, not even a full month into our school year, these behaviors are being taught and embraced, and it helped that the school has a mascot. I forget, it's Chucky or Chip, one of the two. He's with Bieber, and, and it's a costume. And how the, the kids, there's an identity there. And I just left there thinking, I'm glad my, two of my grandchildren have had the opportunity to, to attend the school, one of them currently is. And I thought, this is somewhat reflective of not the magic, but the care, the compassion that occurs at all of our schools daily. And, and that is such an important message that I wanted to ensure that the community hears it, and, and that the staff, the principal of the staff, and even the parents, many of them took off from work and they were there. And it takes all of us to make it happen, and, and I just wanted to thank the staff and the students.
Thank you, Director Barlow. So, I would like to build on that spirit because we had members of the board, superintendent, cabinet, and other staff members who marched in two of the homecoming parades last Friday, JM and Sentry. And I want to thank everybody who participated in it, and the spirit, I love homecoming parades because the, the organic spirit that comes out from the students and the clubs, Longfellow even came and marched in the parade as future, future JM students, and it reflects that same thing, Director Barlow, that the, the students are out there to celebrate their interests and their teams and their clubs and their connection to their high schools. So, we will also have a presence in the upcoming Mayo Homecoming Parade, so if you're looking for candy, it's a great opportunity because I think we might be providing the majority of candy with how much we bought. But it, thank you to everybody who participated and, and to everybody who comes to those parades because it's really nice to see the crowds of the kids and the parents turn out, so. Our next agenda items are 5.1 through 5.5, our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Item 6.1 is a focus topic, Family Engagement Update. Superintendent McHale?
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. I see we've got a number of colleagues coming up who are going to be giving the board an update on our family engagement efforts. You all know Will Ruffin II, well, Jennifer Spindler-Craig, and Julie McLaren. The strategic plan that we are now entering year three of identifies family engagement as a critical building block of student success. Board members are well aware, because we talk about it regularly, that we have the privilege of working with our students 15, 1/5% of their lives between kindergarten and 12th grade. The vast majority of the, the rest of their experience is outside the school day, and of course, the home, the family, is the primary context in which that happens. The research is really clear that within schools, the thing that matters most to student achievement is the caliber and instructional skill of the teacher, but the thing that matters most to student learning is what happens in the home, and it is the family. It creates the context that brings students to school, we hope, either ready to learn or ready to work with us and to get ready to learn. And so, this has been a journey to move into a new strategy for family engagement. It remains a work in progress, and I'm looking forward to giving the board an update on that work in progress. So, turn it over to the team, and thanks for all the work that you're doing.
All right, Dr. McHale, thank you. School board members, thanks for having us here again tonight to provide you this update on family engagement. Please remember, this update was supposed to come last spring of last year, but we were voluntold to push it back to the fall, which I think was a good idea because it allowed us to add some things to the presentation that you will see tonight. So, let's get started. With me today, I have two co-presenters, two wonderful ladies, and I will ask to introduce yourselves.
My name is Julie McLaren. I'm the Community School Site Facilitator at Gage Elementary and also the Family Engagement Liaison at that site.
And I'm Jennifer Spindler-Craig, Coordinator of Family Engagement.
All right, I will. Dr. McHale already introduced.
Yes, and as you are all aware, we previously selected this dual-capacity building framework for family-school partnerships, and this is guiding the work of our family engagement in RPS. And the, the framework really presents the challenge of effective family engagement as an opportunity. If we put essential conditions in place, and if we build the capacity of both our educators and our families, then we can empower them to partner together in support of our students as well as our schools.
Family engagement, as Dr. McHale said, is a crucial component in education for our students to thrive. Both researchers and practitioners recognize that family engagement leads to positive outcomes for students. And then, what's good for students is good for everyone. There are significant benefits for educators at schools as well, including developing positive school climate and culture.
So, from that foundation of what we intend to do and why we intend to do it, we want to highlight how to get there in RPS. And to that end, we've designed a series of very intentional key initiatives that are focused on building the capacity of both our educators and our families in ways that support these partnerships to benefit our students and schools.
If you recall, to the 2022-2023 school year, we delivered our survey, which led us to find three goals, which you can see on the screen there. What I would like to point your attention to is we had over 5,000 responses to this, or I should say, last year's survey, which was two and a half times more than the previous survey's responses.
And in analyzing the goal areas, our second year of survey data indicated that across the district, 67% of parents affirmed that their student's school asks their family for ideas, which was a 1 percentage point increase over the previous result. Regarding sense of belonging, which is an RPS building block, 82% of parents responded affirmatively that they belong at their student's school, which was a 2 percentage point increase. And 74% of respondents reported that their student's school shares ideas with their family to support student learning, marking a 5 percentage point increase. And as we often hear about data, even in this room or especially in this room, two years may be too soon to reveal a clear trend, yet we appreciate the increased response rates, the data shifting in the right direction, and we're excited to continue to monitor these metrics as we work to improve.
One of the key initiatives in our family engagement strategy is the role of family engagement liaisons, which is a position I proudly hold at Gage Elementary. In this capacity, I collaborate closely with our family engagement team. I participate in professional development for my own learning, and I lead efforts to enhance family engagement at our site. And this year, I will facilitate professional development for the rest of our staff at Gage. I will support CAPE, our Caregiver and Parent Empowerment Program, and Talking Points, which is our messaging or communication app that we use with families and gather and analyze data to guide our decision-making.
And over the summer, Julie and several of our family engagement liaisons completed Harvard's online family engagement course led by Dr. MAP, and then they collaborated with me to create a professional development curriculum based on the dual-capacity building framework. And now, all of our family engagement liaisons are earning that Harvard certificate in family engagement, and then they'll be able to facilitate professional development for their site staff throughout the year.
Following the theme of professional development, we have a small group of RPS staff who are selected to attend some in-person training with Dr. MAP and her team, and that will occur this fall at Harvard. And I should say on record that this was all grant-funded.
Yes, and another key initiative that you've heard about before is expanding the use of Talking Points, which is the family engagement communication platform that's really designed to connect our schools and families more effectively. So, with Talking Points, all parents are automatically included and receive school messages via text or via the app if they decide to download that in their preferred language. And of course, we're encouraging staff to use some enhanced features in Talking Points. This year, there's automatic translation of attached documents and translation of video and audio messages for our principals and data analytics that really inform best practices.
So, speaking of some of those analytics, last time we reported to you, there were over 1 million messages exchanged between schools and home. This year, we're reporting that over 2.3 million of those messages have been exchanged, so that's a huge increase. 90% of those messages are still in English, but as you can see on the screen, 4% in Spanish, 2% in Somali, and 1% in Arabic. If you look to the right side of the screen, this is where I think that's really important. Even though 4% of those messages were in Spanish, that equates to over 90,000 messages exchanged between home and school. You can see the same 2% Somali, over 45,000 messages. 1% in Arabic is actually over 20,000 messages exchanged between home and school. So, Talking Points is actually doing what it's designed to do. I'm glad that we adopted it as a tool here in Rochester Public Schools. The information is flowing back and forth from school to home and also from home to school. This one I wanted to show because it shows how Talking Points is being used outside of the school. So, in this example, we have a quote from Cindy Donaldson in our Transportation Department, and she is just talking about how about 1/3 of their families are using Talking Points quite often and how she is happy with the tool. And I'll kind of go into a little bit here on this next quote from Tori, the office manager at Churchill. So, if you can just think of tying those two quotes together, you can see why Talking Points is important. So, at Churchill, they noticed that 43% of their families have chosen to use the Talking Points attendance line, which is almost half for when reporting those absences to their schools. These are the words of Tori. "The TP attendance line has helped ML families communicate more in reporting attendance. Parents who use the attendance line more are now comfortable speaking to me in person, as well as it gave us an opportunity to create a connection that made them feel it was, it was possible to understand each other. And when we understand the why, in this case, for student absences, we are able to put in place other resources that can help the families."
And that brings us to one more essential key initiative, which is CAPE. CAPE supports really meaningful collaboration through empowering our caregivers and parents. And in the 23-24 school year, we launched CAPE cohorts with Gage Elementary, with Native Families, with Willow Creek Middle School, fostering stronger communities at these sites.
As a CAPE facilitator at Gage, I got to see firsthand how CAPE empowers families to become active partners in their child's education. We offered both an English and Arabic dual-language group and a Spanish group, where parents gained valuable knowledge and skills to navigate our complex school system and advocate for their children. In addition to this, they built meaningful connections with our staff and formed strong connections with other families in the class.
So, that brings us to next steps. And successfully passing a referendum is a huge step for this program going forward, so I needed to say that out loud also. But also, I want you to think about the opportunity for you all to come out and visit some of the CAPE program in person, that first experience will be this fall at Overland when they, when they launch around November. Then you will have several other opportunities this spring with some of the schools you can see on the, on the screen there, Church of Hoover, Early Childhood, Franklin, Riverside, and then one of our high schools, Mayo High School.
And since our parents and caregivers express it best, we'd like to share a glimpse of the CAPE journey and showcase some perspectives and insights from families with a video that highlights the CAPE at Gage experience from last year.
I think I would describe CAPE as a resource for parents to learn more about their kid's school.
Relationship that you could have with the teachers, how you could communicate with them better, what to expect, what type of questions to ask them.
It's more about a program on teaching parents how they're individual students, how, what they're learning in school.
This particular programming, for me, allows parents the voice to, to, to advocate for themselves and find those of us within that system that want to support that.
It's another safe place for us to come and build that empowerment and community and give them the tools that they need to better support our students here in RPS and in general.
The most important lesson is that education is progressing and that, I mean, there is much to learn in order to help our children.
Sometimes you get information, but you don't quite understand it until it's really broken down. So, the way that it was given and broken down, you really understand the information.
My favorite thing about CAPE was the information I learned.
We understand that if we are going to accomplish anything in this district, it has to be in partnership with our families. When we put out the call for parents to opt into this CAPE program, you all were the first to step up and say, "Hey, I want in with that. I care about my district. I care about my students, and I'm going to step up and be there for you."
I'm super excited about our CAPE program because this is an opportunity to have some very authentic learning and connections and dialogue where people feel trust. That's really, really important.
Learn a lot from our spirit, and I am most excited to continue learning from you and continue learning with you as you continue your journey with us.
We've found out through our lessons how important the education and how to navigate you with our kids' education is. And it's very important to know that we are so accessible, that we are here to help and guide for whatever needs for your children.
I'm so inspired by you, by your commitment and your investment in your children and in the future of your families.
Like now, I don't need to just go and trust the school and know what the school system. My kids are in good hands, and I need to engage to date them and make them more successful.
Thank you for being part of your student's education by doing this.
Such a great experience for me that I actually look forward for Wednesday evenings to come here. Not only did you get to learn about the school system, but also about the district, and on top of that, you get to meet other parents, hear from them, their experiences, and also learn from them as well.
I didn't know what to expect, but then every, every time, every day I came, like every Wednesday, we participate, I learned something new, and that's making me like, I want to come back for the next week to learn more, you know? It was really, really interesting, all the information, like, like he'd say about the college stuff was super important for me, like as a parent, was really important for the future for my kids.
You're more than committed to learning more on how to help out your kids, how to understand them more. Great place to connect with other parents, trying to understand the same thing.
I think this program is very good, and only I want to say, for those who let us to participate in this program, we are very thankful because we are very happy to be with all those families that join this program. We are thankful.
So, with that, that was a brief window into the world of CAPE, and we're excited to take on the challenge to spread CAPE throughout the district in the future. And we'll end and ask if you have any questions for us. And we'll end and ask if you have any questions for us.
Board members? Director Marlin?
How did you know? First of all, thank you for communicating in such a sincere fashion that belonging actually does matter. I think sometimes we may question what we don't understand or perhaps haven't experienced or ever had the need for. And what this presentation tonight has done for many, and I hope our viewing public will, and those present will, that light turns on and they realize and they can say, I get it now, I realize why belonging is so important. The creation of the home and school partnership, it's doing what it's designed to do, promoting student learning and improving educational outcomes. Sometimes programs are aspirational, but you guys have been able to take it from a concept and actually show that this is more than just an aspirational belief, but it is now a reality within RPS. And then finally, and this is embedded within the slide presentation, the statement that when we understand the why, we can put in place other resources that can help students. And whether it's dealing with absences, which was a why, and Talking Points, it seems like figured prominently in identifying the why. I have just a curious question as relates to CAPE. How instrumental was Talking Points in initially launching CAPE and that being the, was it the primary platform used to communicate with? It seems like some of our adults may have been initially non-English, well, English was maybe their third or fourth language, but they were able to navigate that. And can you speak briefly to that if you don't mind?
We, when introducing CAPE as a new program, we knew that it's hard to know what to expect from a flyer, and so we sent lots of communication out about it and explained it. So we did flyers in our newsletter, we sent home paper flyers, and then we used Talking Points to make videos to send out to families. So we did a bilingual video. My principal and I did an English and Spanish video to explain a little bit about what it was and invite people. And then we made personal phone calls to families that we thought would especially benefit from it. And so we really did a very strategic outreach campaign to get as many people as possible to know what it was so that they could have the opportunity to opt in. Now with Talking Points, you can make a video and it will translate it in, it will add in, like it will translate it in subtitles down below, but you can also do an audio message and it will interpret the audio message for you in the phone, like in the phone settings, home language. And so that is a powerful tool that we can use now that we didn't have access to last spring when we launched, so.
Thank you.
Director Marvin?
I can't think, well, I can think of programs that are as important, but not one that's more important than this. We know that we have a community full of parents who love their kids and want to support them, and now they really can by learning more. What kind of capacity do you have in terms of how many families can be engaged? I mean, not all of them, but with this program, how many can you reach, do you think?
Well, of course, we are aspirational there in the sense that we would like to expand this and be able to have it accessible to all of our families. And that may be determined by some of the capacity that we have in terms of resources and personnel and staffing and things like that. So it is, we intend to keep rolling it out, keep expanding it. We'd like to reach everyone.
I think the real test is going to come this fall when we launch at Overland. Overland has a really good structure for their family lunches where they get hundreds of parents to come out over the lunch hours, and that's the same time that they're going to strategically run their CAPE program while the parents are already there. So we will test our capacity limits there, but I would just say whatever, whoever shows up will find a way to make it happen.
I know you will.
Director Garcia?
I love all of the very creative ways that you were able to engage families to get them to this. I think it's fantastic. The video gets you right in the feels. I loved that. Can you help us understand if we did want to come check out the 2024-2025 cohorts, like what you would expect from us as board members or how you kind of envision us participating or observing in that process? Because I would love to actually go to these things.
I would personally say just observe and take it in. And also imagine if you were the parent, would this information be relevant to you so that you can give us some good feedback after you visit the CAPE program? And then maybe talk to some of the parents, see what is valuable from their eyes firsthand, ask them what more they need of so you can know what resources we would need to put in place. I would just like for you all to just take it all in as much as possible. Don't just be a fly on the wall, but be immersed in the program itself.
Thank you.
Well, I have spoken before about how important this program is and how important it's been to me because I've watched the district try many times to try and do this. And it wasn't until we invested the resources in it through our strategic plan that we were able to really commit to it. And you have definitely, you and your team, committed to it in such a big way. You know I'd love to see it at every school tomorrow. And I understand the barriers are human because you have to have enough trained facilitators and time in the day or in the evenings to organize these. What's the optimal size of a CAPE cohort, though? Because you just talked about Overland and hundreds of parents. So, you know, what's a good class size, if you will?
Well, we do kind of think about it in that sense of class size, you know, 35 or so is kind of optimal as recommended by PK. There have been, of course, facilitators who are able to accommodate more than that if they have some experience, so could have a group of 50 or somebody told me that they had had up to 100 with some experience. And of course, it's possible to have multiple rooms. And if necessary, we can hopefully run cohorts in sequence. So maybe we might have to have a waiting list and then we offer it again in a few weeks and build some anticipation and enthusiasm for it if that's necessary. But we definitely want to try to and intend to try to accommodate the interest.
And I remember when this was first starting, you put out a call for individuals who wanted to be trained or facilitators. Are all of our facilitators paid or do we have volunteer facilitators? And will there still be a space if there's anyone who sees this and says, this might be something I'd like to get involved with?
Oh, that's a great question. We have some facilitators who have been trained and receive a small stipend. This year, we're also going to be training all of our family engagement liaisons to be able to be facilitators with the hope that that could be part of their role perhaps in the future. And there are some other staff members who are interested in experiencing that professional development too, so that we can make it more sustainable. And we, of course, are interested and welcome other relevant community members who have some of those facilitation skills.
Director McLaughlin?
I join my board colleagues in very much appreciating the value of this program. I think, again, like Chair Nathan said, it's been a long time coming and it's really gratifying to see it come to fruition like this as a pilot that's going to be expanding moving forward. Can you quantify for us the investment in this, the financial investment? It doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, the exact dollar amount, but how much are we able to invest in this currently? And if you can answer about what we would like to see?
That's been a topic of discussion for sure. I would just say that we're in the tens of thousands of dollars currently. Roughly $13,000 were on one program. And now we're trying to expand with not the same amount of money for every other program. So if anyone's out there listening and watching, please go and vote for the referendum because you can now see the value of programs like this. And this would be one of those things that would be in the discussion for something to go away if we don't have those resources. So it takes a lot of financial resources to make something like this happen. It doesn't just happen out of thin air. So appreciate that question.
I can just even be a little more specific because I'm looking at, I, unlike Will, could pull up the number. We, using federal COVID funds, we purchased the curriculum, the rights to which we have in perpetuity. And so we have that and it's fixed cost. And right now, the annual cost, we estimate for the current capacity of the program, which to, you know, Dr. Marvin's question, could be expanded, is $187,760 per year. So a significant, but in the scheme of things, relatively modest investment for a pretty high impact on families and then, of course, by extension on kids.
One of the questions that came to my mind, kind of in the back of my mind when this was first rolled out, is that the current cohort would then have some role in speaking to other community members about this, what they've learned. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
So speaking, can you repeat that?
Sorry, I didn't, that the current cohort will then, the part of, as I understood, part of the curriculum is they would then be informed about how they can share this with their peers in the community. Is that something that is happening and do you expect that to continue?
I would say yes, we expect it to continue, and you saw the first wave of that, which was the video because that could be sent to multiple people at one time.
That wasn't just for us then, that was for?
Oh, no. This is just the beginning. We actually have smaller clips of videos that we're going to use through social media throughout.
Oh, wonderful.
This one was just for you all special, but that was just the beginning. So as we start to produce more cohorts, and especially in the same buildings, we can have people who have gone through, our graduates, come through and give their testimony, if you will, during each cohort.
Right. And that's what I like about it, we're investing in these cohorts, but the reach of it can be as broadly as we can be.
Yes, and that is really the idea. And I think that when we had this cohort at Gage, there were some parents who clearly seemed to be identifiable as future potential facilitators. And that's so much of the empowering aspect of it and I think so much of what, you know, what really connects people to the program because those parents are really trustworthy in their, you know, in their circles of friends. And I think that that makes a big difference.
That's wonderful.
I want to add too that that communication and that outreach doesn't just go that direction, it's bidirectional. And so many of our families, as part of it, they were able to interview some of our staff members at the end and they were, we even had Andy come out and share about finance because they had a lot of questions about that throughout the program. And they're interested in joining committees now, like they want to be involved in the decision-making and bring their voice forward so that that impact goes both ways.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
If I, my Director McLaughlin, it's a key question and it's one reason why, you know, part of my role, obviously, in supporting these folks is I'm pushing very hard to get as many cohorts underway this year as we can because I've worked extensively with this, the core program in previous positions, and this spreads by word of mouth. It is, the stuff staff does is important, but that's just the spark. And when it takes off, it becomes a thing. And there were times at its peak when I was in St. Paul schools, then also when I was at the University of Minnesota working with Minneapolis, was we had hundreds of parents at the graduations because it became a thing you just had to do. Now, there are important staff capacity issues that we need to figure out here, but I really do see this as the year we can put CAPE on the map, and these colleagues have agreed to that. And so we're stretching beyond where we started last year because I think if we get to that point where parents are encouraging other parents, it takes on a momentum of its own that has a lot of power in it because it's parents doing it for their kids with other parents, especially from their communities. So it'll be really exciting at the end of the year. As you know, all of the key initiatives are part of my goals that the board will be evaluating me on. So it'll be very exciting at the end of the year to tell you what we did in terms of our goals for CAPE this year. Because if the goals that we've set are achieved, that good but small start we got last year will look very different by the end of the year, and that really sets up some pretty exciting progress moving forward. And I should also say just too, final point for me, while I love that our program highlighted communities that, to varying degrees, are often new to the United States, this is also a program for communities who have been there here for generations. And so this is a program that core curriculum is useful for anyone who wants to figure out how their child can succeed academically, develop socially, emotionally. And so I think we're going to see a really diverse and spreading set of CAPE programs across RPS, and I'm excited to do that and I'm grateful for your leadership in making that possible.
Thank you very much. We'll see you at Overland. Our next agenda item is a monitoring item, people's strategy update and initiatives. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. Board members, Carl Bachen, our executive director of human resources will be coming down to join us. As board members remember, last year, and Carl will refresh all of our memories about this, we convened a series of working groups as one of the waves of our strategic plan to really look at what we are doing to develop the educators and other staff in our district to make all the difference for kids. And so we had a diverse, extraordinarily robust set of volunteers for those working groups. And in the spring, we updated you on a very long list of possibilities. I committed to come back to you, along with Carl, by the end of, before the end of September, and update you on our first priorities for what we've now come to call our people's strategies. This is going to be a multi-year effort. It's a gigantic, I would say transformative effort. And so we have a robust set of priorities for this year, but as Carl will touch on, that's just the beginning. So this will be a quick walkthrough of what is really going to be a complex, multi-year effort to invest in our people who invest in our kids.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for the introduction. Dr. McCall, you probably knocked off my first slide or two with that introduction. I was just going to reiterate that.
You can do it again.
Well, I have a little bit more specific information related to that. So just in some background review, as part of their strategic plan, we assembled seven working groups in November of '23 to review current process, gather additional information, and make recommendations. And those seven areas were the ones that we covered back in April. We had 125 staff that volunteered to be part of these groups, and every one of them that volunteered was placed into a group. Almost every one of them got the group they wanted. We had a couple of people in slide into groups that maybe didn't have as many people, but they, very few. And the people, the volunteers in these groups included people from operations, the teacher group, food service, ESPs, maintenance, principals, teachers, cabinet, SAC, substitute teachers and clerical. So like Dr. McCall said, a very representative group. Altogether, these groups made over, made around 113 recommendations. And then as Dr. McCall said, we were here in April and we made a commitment to come back. In the meantime, we have prioritized our recommendations to define the initiatives for the 24-25 school year. And I won't read these, but these are the 14. I'll spend some time going over each of these in the following slides. All of these are in process and have steps for completion. Timelines are starting now all the way up until the end of June in '25. I'd also like to say that all these initiatives will be collaborative in nature, they will not be completed in silos. We will be consulting with, depending on the initiative, it might be the union, it might be principals, it might be our special ed directors, be working very closely with our ESPs. Some of these were in the process of just setting up meetings and getting their input as we develop these initiatives. Some of these were in the process of just setting up meetings and, and getting their input, um, as we, as we develop these initiatives. Um, our first initiative is related to education support professional induction. And without reading the slide, just, our focus is on ESPs because, first of all, data has shown over the past several years, these are positions that are vacant. Um, we have the highest turnover rate. We've, um, approached twenty-five percent in our turnover rate in some, in, with ESPs compared to teachers and principals, which are in the single digits. So even with that four to five hour increase that we've provided the last couple of years through their, their contract, we continue to have vacancies. I think when I was here to review the first week of school, we had about twenty-five vacancies. We're still sitting at that amount, and it doesn't mean those twenty-five jobs are open, it means people have left, people have come in. But we still, at this point, have about the same number of vacancies. So even with that raise, we, giving good induction and good support, hopefully will reduce that and increase our retention of these very important people. The second initiative I will discuss just briefly, um, again, application and interview questions. It is definitely time to review and update our application interview questions. There's an opportunity to eliminate outdated questions, both in the interview, um, both interview questions and in the application. We have too many sets of some of these questions that just are, maybe a principal will save them, put them in the shared drive, and then, so there might be fifteen different versions of an elementary, um, interview form. Also, can we streamline our applications? Some of our applications are probably outdated, and we're asking questions that maybe nobody is even looking at anymore. So I think it's time to talk to principals, to talk to the people who are filling out applications. Streamlining, also asking questions that are, make clear our priorities as RPS. And that'll help us determine if the candidates are, believe the same things we do that all students can learn. And as noted in the slide, we will not do every position. We'll start with our more frequent positions, teachers, special ed teachers, ESPs. And, um, so those are very rare positions, may not have that review this year. But at some point, hopefully we get to all of them in the next couple of years. Evaluation of central office leaders and ESPs. This initiative was scaled back. It was going to be, every group was, we were going to be looking at the evaluation piece for them. We decided to focus on ESPs and administration. Principals are separate, they're evaluated by a different tool, but this, these would be our central office administrators. For central office administrators, we're going into our second year of being rated on a, a group of competencies. And how do we better differentiate between ineffective, developing, effective, and highly effective? Maybe there's, instead of four points on that scale, maybe there's three. So we're, we've already done a first draft, we're taking it back for further consideration, refining. Just looking to improve that. And then with our ESPs, they're, they're asking to be evaluated, and we, we got a little bit of traction before the pandemic. I'm doing an annual evaluation of all ESPs. Once the pandemic hit, that was something that was not a requirement. But even during negotiations, they are, they specifically have said, we want to be evaluated. So working on an updated tool, we have a tool that needs updating, it needs to be refined, it needs to be, um, made more current, some of the things that are being evaluated. For our job postings initiative, again, something, looking at what is out there and changing what we're putting out there for applicants to view. More information about our district. The applicant pool for many of our positions has changed quite a bit. We are getting far fewer applicants. We're competing for a smaller, um, group, a pool of candidates. So we need more effective communication about our position timelines. Just an example of how the, the talent pool or the applicant pool has changed. I was sharing this with our, with Cabinet a couple of weeks ago. The, there's something called the Minnesota Educator Job Fair that's held at the Minneapolis Convention Center. And it's been held for many, many years. I can remember ten, fifteen years ago going up there when I worked in special education. And there were hundreds of vendors and hundreds of applicants. And in the last couple of years, that has dwindled down to where they didn't even hold it at the convention center anymore. And we, we were not in the front row, we would be a couple of rows back. And we were wondering if something stopped or, or delayed the start. This number of applicants has dropped so much. We used to interview four or five special ed teachers. Now, last couple of years, it was one or none. So it, and now this year, ultimately, they canceled it. So it used to be the premier hiring event of the year, and now it's, it's gone. So it just tells you about our applicant pool and how we need to update our practices and how we're reaching out to them. Administrative levels, this is a, this is an interesting initiative. I've dug into this a little bit, but our use of the terms director, supervisor, coordinator, and manager definitely need more consistency. The, the titles have been used, they've switched. What are the criteria and responsibilities that go along with these? As we look at this, maybe we are looking at something we're considering as, in the draft I'm putting together currently, is, is there something different for instructional staff versus operations? And then just an example I'll give you, as far as coordinators, we have a high number of coordinators. But if you look at the prevailing definition of a coordinator, they are not supervising or evaluating or hiring or firing. But we have some of our coordinators doing that, we have others that are not doing that. So that might be something that we would switch those positions that are supervising and hiring to a different title. Maybe it's supervisor or manager. That would be one example. Application software, this is a very, a very large initiative. RPS has been using the current hiring platform for, I would guess, at least fifteen years, if not longer. The current app, application program we are using has a, it kind of has a corner market on K-12 education. Some of the areas of growth for that, applicant tracking is something that's lacking. One of the things our principals are constantly asking, is there something where we can see where the job offer is? That is something that is not in our current, um, the current program we're using. Other programs have, we've, we've taken a little bit of a look at some other programs that are out there. We've done demos at a small scale. Some of them have this intuitive, I don't know if that's the right term. But once you upload your resume, it automatically populates your application, which is a huge time saver. And again, we're competing for applicants that, one of the people, I think you've all met Lindsay, our recruiter, that was one of the things, first thing she said is, I can't believe I had to upload my resume and fill out an application. So those, that's the kind of feedback we're getting. Some of these programs have that. At the same time, some of the new programs are missing some very important, important features, so we have to be very careful. The extra layer of complexity here in that last hash, you'll see on my, on the slide. We're also looking at a replacement for Skyward, and some of the programs that are student information systems and business systems also have hiring components. So if the possibility is, is we'll replace it with something, maybe it's a replacement for Skyward or an upgrade for Skyward that would have a hiring component. So we need to work hand in hand with business services and Mr. Carlson on that. Interview team preparation. Some of the feedback from that working group was that they need more training and guidance for our interview teams, the do's and don'ts. Making sure that we're reducing bias, the importance of diverse interview teams. We talked about a video, maybe we're, as I, as we were, as I was thinking about this, it's maybe a video slash manual. And some of the preliminary work out there I've been doing, there are some models out there, so that, that gives us some ideas of what to include in that video and, and my manual. Job interview follow-up questions is number eight. Again, with feedback from the working groups was to provide clarification on how a team should ask follow-up questions. We want all applicants to have a similar experience. And there's a difference between a follow-up question versus someone just asking a candidate a question out of the blue that the other candidates didn't have, and, and people kind of tease me because I get a little uptight about that kind of stuff. But asking, how to ask an appropriate follow-up question when to ask it, um, and not to give someone a vastly different experience than another candidate would be our goal. Number nine, our job offer process. I think it's, comes down to strengthening and standardizing it, um, looking at, um, the procedure we would update is to, to have candidates hear from somebody sooner. We have a limited number of staffing specialists, and they might have a stack of job offers. Working with Dr. McCall on this, the suggestion that, and, and the working group, that the hiring manager makes an informal job offer without talking about salary, without talking about benefits, and then it goes. That way, the person knows they've been offered the job informally, and then our staffing specialist within the next day or two talks about specific salary, um, placement on the salary schedule. They can answer questions about insurance before they officially, uh, accept the position or not. And then following up with, um, specifics and a follow-up email, multiple, I'm thinking of multiple modes of communication. And just a better documented process in case there are questions, or maybe a dispute down the line that there is some kind of paper trail or document trail on that. New employee orientation. See, this is an opportunity to provide, one of the things we probably currently do not do a good enough job of is talking about our district and the students and the things that are happening, um, the strategic plan. So that, that should be something that would be, we would be able to get in there fairly quickly. Also, the nuts and bolts of, that employees need to know. And, and this is evolving, our, our, some of the things that we've brought into orientation in the last couple of years, we've really tried to talk to employees where we see the issues, for instance, social media use, boundaries with students, cultural competency, Title IX, and getting that information, highlighting that more during, during orientation. But we will take another look and do some more adjustments and possible more of an overhaul on some of that information. Our new employee checklist. I think I heard somebody say after the last presentation how important it is to feel welcome and a sense of belonging. We are seeing that. One of the things we heard is crossover about how important it is for employees to feel that sense of belonging. So that's something we would want to emphasize in this. Again, we would be collaborating with ESPs, principals, maintenance, clerical. Things we should cover, what, as an employee, what do you wish we had have covered when you went through orientation and went to your building for the first day? I think some, I don't think I know this, that things sometimes are moving so fast, that principal or those principals want that person in the building, they want to even skip orientation. And then when they get to the building, excuse me, they're going into that room on the first day. They haven't met anybody, they haven't been introduced. Those are the things we need, need to do a better job of, and I think that we heard that from a few people that said, I didn't even get introduced to my building, I was thrown into the, they needed somebody so badly, I went right in there. So those are things that we need to, um, wow, that's very light. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll try to move even faster. Employee recognition. They have more recommendations beyond this, but these were some of them. There, there was also the talk of doing, um, recognize people who've been here certain number of years, five, ten, fifteen, twenty. Number thirteen, the grow your own. A lot, there's a lot of money that's been made available by the state of Minnesota, so taking advantage of this. And Lindsay Nelson's been working very hard on this. We have the grow your own student pathway, the adult pathway, and a special ed pathway. And we have active people, we have a graduate from one already, and then we have active members in all of those. Student pathways starting a little bit slower. We have three people interested, but we have, we're paying, I'm approving tuition checks. So we have people in, and hopefully we'll see people coming into our, to the RPS employees when they, when they complete their, um, training. And then finally, exit interviews. Get a better understanding of why people are leaving. Um, we have an exit interview survey. Completion rate has been very, very low, so thinking of ways to improve that and, um, working with sites on how to come up with a better process. Um, twenty-five, twenty-six, and beyond, even though, um, twenty-four, twenty-five school year is very ambitious, there's more work to be done. So we have these plans to add initiatives beyond the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I won't go into any detail there. There's a second page of those. So, sorry, why don't, do you have any questions that I can answer?
Dr. Garcia?
And this is a little bit off topic, but I promised to bring it back. Do you, has there been an increase in applications for like Minsync, for example?
Minsync, staff or students?
Staff, sorry.
That I don't know off the top of my, I could find that out.
So, I mean, I think the, the answer to the question was more, um, curiosity in the sense that like a lot of these things, which, yes, it makes sense to improve our practices of both the hiring and onboarding of staff members. But I'm also still, I also still think in that space that anyone who is like, generationally speaking, like a younger millennial or younger, it's not so much that there, we're lacking those individuals in the workforce, it's the nature of the work that they're looking for. And they're not going into five, eight-hour days plus anymore. And so part of me also wonders, um, outside of this, how to make, either how to adjust the way that we're doing education, I suppose, to meet the needs of a, a very different workforce while also taking care of some of these things. Because it, it is certainly like, and, and my work, because I have to worry about this now too, is hiring people, is there's certainly a dying breed of individuals where, you know, I think it used to be that people were like, yep, I want like retirement pension, whatever it is, I'm going to go into like a public service job, like public education. I'm going to go work for state or federal government, um, be there for twenty-five plus years, and then I'm finished. Whereas that is not what people are looking for anymore. And so I'm, I wonder if, even talking to like whoever these grow your own folks are, or are going to be, about if they could like reimagine, if they knew they had to work full-time within the district in their specific role, what would that look like to meet both the needs of the students that they're caring for, as well as to work a job that they would actually want to like retire from? And so that's more just like food for thought or me wondering things out loud. But I appreciate a lot of the changes that are coming, because I think I did get a lot of feedback too about, you know, the application process is like thirteen pages, and I just want to come volunteer, you know? And so I think that that was a struggle for people, and so anything more serious than that, it felt like a barrier. Whereas now, I think if we streamline some of these processes, like the easier it is to get people connected with the work they want to do, you know, removing those barriers is helpful. But I also am just, I guess, thinking long-term, like, is this, how edu, is education going to always be like a Monday through Friday situation? And I know even for like non-district folks, but the people that we contract with, like if you're a school-based or schooling mental health professional, a lot of times they come into a job, like they'll start working through a nonprofit, and they're like, yes, I want to work with, um, you know, I want to work at Willow Creek. The assumption initially is like they're going to work a school year and have summers off, and that's not how it works. So, and that's like a hard reality for some people. And what do you do in the summertime when maybe the, the students aren't around and you're not providing them services? So I'm sorry, I know you were struggling to.
No, I wasn't. I, 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 it's exciting that you're beginning to think about that. I think in some ways what you just highlighted, Dr. Garcia, is really, what's the next phase beyond our current strategic plan? I sort of see this as putting down some basic infrastructure that we've been lacking. But the next phase is really redesign and re-envisioning, where once you've got some of these core processes, you really say, on the student side, what really engages kids academically? But on the staff side, what really is going to recruit and retain, uh, the kind of educators and staff that we want with kids? And I love the idea of really, uh, taking a step back and really saying, tell us where your paradigm is. It, there's, it bothers me to no end when people say, education never changes, it hasn't changed. There are aspects of it that have changed dramatically. But I think I could say the structure of the teaching profession is pretty much the same as when Dr. Marvin started it and Director Workman, and then when I started it, and then when others. I mean, that, that core structure, and there's, as you point out, many generational reasons to question if we're going to recruit and retain the people who are great with kids, but who are willing to exist in that structure longer term. So I'm excited about that kind of thinking. We do need to get these things in place where we have got better software, we've got better tracking, we are recognizing our employees more effectively, some really important things. I think this is the year to kind of lay that infrastructure in human resources, but I think it's a great time to be thinking more creatively, longer term.
Yeah, I think it's, it's amazing to me when people are looking for jobs in like a psychiatric hospital and are like, how much telework can I do? a psychiatric hospital and are like, how much telework can I do?
That's interesting.
And I'm like, that's a hospital, you need to be treating patients. But I mean, that's, the reality is there, and so like having to contend with that, and I'm consistently like pressing my own bosses, like we need to figure this out, because it's not going to get, like, there's not going to be the next generation who just like magically is like, you know what, yeah, more than 40 hours a week, five days a week, that's exactly where I want to be, because that, that is not where people are right now.
Yeah.
Dr. Marvin?
Just briefly, two things. First, I did start teaching a really long time ago, but I was, I was incredibly young. So there's that. Secondly, Mr. Bach, and it was really invigorating for me to be involved in this process. The working groups, I think, had an incredibly good representation of staff people from all, all lanes, all areas of our school district. And I'm really gratified, not surprised, but gratified, that you and that the superintendent and the staff are taking their recommendations and really putting them into action. So thank you for that, because it was a, I know a lot of work for you.
And I think back to the survey that originally generated the feedback from staff. And I know that when we discussed that survey, we talked about how hard it was to hear some of the feedback from the staff. But what I appreciate is that I'm seeing all those voices reflected in all of these initiatives, and to hear about the work of the working groups as well. But I also thought how ambitious this was, and that this was a very long list of, of things that you're managing with, with this group of people. So we recognize that as well, but reconfirm that it is something that we support going forward, because we, we need to take care of our staff, especially in the climate that we've all been speaking of, of, you know, we, we need to be attractive, we need to be a district that is attractive to really good quality teaching and support staff for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
So board members, we're about to head into a, a number of prep for action and action items. Would anybody like to have a brief recess before we go into that, or shall we move forward?
Let's move forward.
We're good? Okay.
Hour three.
Our next agenda item is 8.1 referendum defeat resolution. As I said, this is prep for action, and we're scheduled to take action on this at the October 8th meeting. Because this resolution is quite long, and the intent of our time together tonight is to allow the board to discuss the resolution, I will read it, and then the superintendent will give us an update. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct the superintendent to develop a 25, 2025, 2026 general fund budget recommendation that includes the reductions outlined below if the Ignite Student Learning Referendum Plan is not passed by voters on November 5th, 2024. One, close three elementary schools to save $2,304,392. Closing three elementary schools would reduce the number of spaces available for students at the elementary level in RPS by approximately 10%. The schools that the administration recommends be closed if the referendum fails must be identified before January 1st, 2025. Schools would be recommended for closure based on the following criteria. The degree to which the school currently has excess capacity, the geographic location of the school relative to student residences, the impact that closing the school would have on students who attend other schools due to changes in attendance boundaries, age and physical condition of the school, presence of special facilities in the school such as supports for special education students that would need to be replicated elsewhere if the school closed. Two, increase class sizes at all grade levels by three students to save $5,643,396. Financial savings from increases in class size result from the elimination of teaching positions as fewer teachers are assigned larger number of students. The reduction would save funds through the elimination of approximately 50 FTE teaching positions. Three, reduce central office positions and non-instructional positions at the school level to save $2,381,608. This reduction would save funds through the elimination of approximately 20 FTE positions, including positions in the superintendent's cabinet, central office administrators, principals, clerical staff, maintenance staff, and operations staff. Four, reduce programs and positions in the four investment areas included in the Ignite Student Learning Proposal to save $6,378,956. Those reductions would be made in the following categories of the Ignite Student Learning Plan. Positions that assist students who need more support to thrive, reading specialists in curriculum, media specialists at elementary schools, community schools coordinator positions and programming, the K parent education and empowerment program, the launching emerging adults program or LEAP, project search at Mayo Clinic, and driver's education for low-income students. Programs that challenge advanced students and enrich learning for all students, advanced learning teachers and services, curriculum enhancements to deepen learning, project lead the way in middle schools, music positions in middle schools, staff and programs at Quarry Hill Nature Center, and the Planetarium at Mayo High School. Services that strengthen student well-being and mental health, school counselor positions and mental health screening. Classes that prepare students for success in vocational and technical careers, high school courses in auto mechanics, construction trades, accounting, and more, C-tech classes, computer science, law enforcement, agriculture, pharmacy, and more, P-tech pathways in nursing and information technology, and post-secondary education and career planning software and supports. Be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby automatically rescind this resolution if the Ignite Student Learning Operating Referendum is approved on November 5th, 2024. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I am going to be brief in providing some background on where this recommendation is. I felt a need to revisit the two primary drivers of both the referendum that is on the ballot and the deficit that has led us to this place, because none of us, I believe, would be choosing to have the conversation that that resolution is prompting us to have. The first, as board members and increasingly our community know well, is depicted by that graph in which the dotted orange line is the increase that the state of Minnesota has provided in the general fund for the last approximately 20 years, and that blue line is what that increase would have looked like had that funding increased at the rate of inflation. It would result in funding per student in Rochester Public Schools that was almost 19 percentage, percent higher than it is today. So that is driver one. The second is the local support. And we can see that 15 school districts in Minnesota that serve more than 10,000 students, including Rochester, and there we can see in the red bar that Rochester is last in voter-approved operating support for our students in our school district, significantly below that horizontal line, which is the average, and below those districts that are above that average. If the referendum is passed, Rochester would go from being 15 out of 15 to being 10 out of 15 and slightly below that average. So that is the financial reality that we've been grappling with since I got to Rochester in 2021. As board members also know well, we've cut $21 million since that point and eliminated 156 positions. And everyone, at least on this board, recalls one year ago in this room where after the narrow failure of the 2023 referendum, we were forced to announce the closure of schools, the restructuring of attendance boundaries, the elimination of programs. Thankfully, Mayo Clinic stepped in with a $10 million contribution that allowed the board to use one-time reserves for slightly less than $7 million to give us our only year of no major reductions since I have been in Rochester. So the resolution that is before the board tonight in prep for action is very unorthodox. It's very unusual in September to be talking about the next school year's budget in such specific terms. So it's very important that both board members and our stakeholders who are paying attention to this process understand the why of this resolution and what the implications might be. The why comes from the outreach that we conducted after the narrow failure of the last referendum, in which we heard loud and clear that if the board puts a referendum on the ballot in 2024, which you have since elected to do, let the community know what the consequences of not passing that referendum will be. And do so with as much specificity as you can, understanding that you also need to be accurate. When we began the planning for the referendum that is on the ballot November 5th, the structural deficit that we identified was $19.4 million, and so that is the amount that is on the ballot and would be increased for 10 years at the rate of inflation to put the school district in a position of financial stability. Now, in September of the year before a budget year, it is not possible to identify with precision exactly what our financial position will be for the following year. And that is because we are on the cusp of more than eight months of very extensive analytic work that our very talented finance team does pretty much full-time, if not 24/7, to develop the budget proposal that you will act on in June. Some of the factors that are currently unknown in terms of the budget for the 25, 26 school year are the salary and benefit costs based on our final contract settlements with our labor employee groups, our unions. Some of those negotiations remain ongoing, we don't know exactly where they'll settle. Our health insurance contributions, which are determined by, to put it over simplistically but not inaccurately, how many of our employees got sick, and how many got really sick in the prior year. Our enrollment projections, which we do our best to predict, but which are not a, an exact science, and it's certainly a projection that gets much more accurate as the school year goes along. State and federal funding levels, which can vary dramatically at times, depending upon where the state and federal governments are in their budget cycles. The actual level of the local levy, which you will be turning to in a subsequent agenda item tonight, and of course, factors like utilities costs, what it costs to heat and operate our buildings. So those are just some of the things that will become clear between now and when you vote on the budget in June, and that is why it is not possible right now to say with absolute certainty exactly what the deficit would be if the referendum does not pass. However, it is possible to say with unquestionable certainty that a major deficit would face this school district. We know it would be at least $16.7 million. Because of two important funding sources we are relying on this year to avoid being in deficit for the 2024, 2025 school year. And those two funding sources are $10 million from Mayo Clinic and our drawdown of 16, 6.7 million in budget reserves, which I recommended and you chose to do for the current, current school year. We know that Mayo Clinic, and I would submit no other organization, is remotely likely to write another $10 million check for the upcoming school year, and we know it would be imprudent to continue to use the budget reserve, which is intended to protect the school district against drastic unforeseen circumstances, like the one we all lived through during the COVID pandemic or other factors that might happen. So we know that there's at least a $16.7 million deficit, and in order to develop a resolution that I am confident you could vote on, and that should the referendum not pass, you would then be able to take up as part of the budget process in the spring, we want to be conservative in giving that projection. I think there is very little chance that the deficit would not be larger than $16.7 million, but we really can say with confidence that that is the minimum deficit that we would face for the next school year. The resolution that is, that Chair Nathan just read, recommends that we develop a budget proposal for your review this spring that includes the reductions that the chair outlined. You would consider that proposed budget, as you do every year, through the budget process, which I'll briefly summarize in a subsequent slide. And so the resolution that you are considering tonight in the prep for action category, and that you will vote on at the next meeting, is not the budget, but it is a serious direction to staff to develop the budget that you would receive in the spring. And as you do every year, you would ask questions and provide guidance, and ultimately give me direction on the final version of that budget. So this is an important step, but it is not jumping over eight months of analysis and work to vote early on the budget. Just to give you a sense of scope, even though $16.7 million is a lot of money, you can see there, the reserve that we're using this year, it constitutes 2.3% of our budget, and then that Mayo Clinic contribution constitutes 3.4% of the budget. So Chair Nathan walked through those reductions in the resolution, and you all heard them, and you know those expenses well. I want to just break it down a little bit further and add a bit of explanatory language. The closure of the elementary schools, which Chair Nathan mentioned would reduce our total spaces by 10%, is designed to achieve efficiencies. You move more kids into fewer buildings, you save on operating costs and expenses, you save on some staffs, some staff in the positions that you only need one of, like a principal, like certain custodial positions, like certain positions that are not increased based on the number of kids you have in a school, like, like the number of teachers. Closing elementary schools, in my view, is not an appropriate decision at this time in Rochester, because even though there is some excess capacity that we could reduce in the very, very near term, every longer-term projection that I have seen for our community is that enrollment will be on the rise here five years from now. And so to shutter three elementary schools and then need to reopen them three years from now is not something I would recommend, absent the kind of financial crisis that would result from this referendum not passing. We would shutter the schools, we would retain them, we would need to make sure that the facilities are kept in condition that would allow us to reopen them down the road, and it would save money. It would save 2.3 million. I believe that while that would be necessary if we have to cut at this level, it would be short-sighted in the medium and longer term. The class size increase, as the chair mentioned, would result in about 50 teaching positions, using our average salary and benefits. Now, for some folks out there, especially maybe who've never been a teacher or who may not be a current parent, three more students might not seem like a lot. But I will tell you, in the eyes of most staff, students, and parents, it's quite a lot. We have targets in Rochester that we use for class size, and which we adhere to and take very seriously. It doesn't mean when you hit the target, you immediately add another teacher, though we do get on that path. But our targets would increase at kindergarten from 21 kids per class to 24, first grade from 25 to 28, second grade from 30 to 33, third grade also from 30 to 33, fourth grade from 32 to 35, and fifth grade from 32 to 35. So that's a significant increase. Obviously, that is not headed in the direction I would want it to go. We've already had to raise class size since I've been in Rochester as part of our previous budget reductions. That's not the kind of added challenge we want to give our teachers at the very moment that they're embracing deeper learning and literacy and, and all the academic priorities that we have. But that's where the money is. That's where you actually can begin to get to the level of savings that would be required. The next category of positions that are at the central office and some non-instructional positions, so non-teaching positions, would eliminate about 20 FTE positions, full-time equivalent, saving about 2.3 million. Excuse me, I misspoke the, the earlier point. That's 5.6 million for the class size reduction and 2.3 for this central. Why the difference in the two? There's many fewer people. I know everyone thinks there's a lot of people sitting down in the Edison Building or Central Office, and what do those people do? I thought that when I was a teacher. There's not as many of us, believe me, that are here, but that would be a proportional reduction, including at the most senior levels of the school district. The final category is a reduction in those areas that would receive 10 years of support from the referendum proposal. And board members will note that the total amount of funding that those areas would receive if the referendum passes is $19.4 million. However, I'm recommending that the resolution would direct slightly more than 6.3 million in reductions. Why not the full 19.4? We could not cut all of those programs and positions that would be funded by the referendum and keep our district operating. We could not cut all of our school counselors, for instance. So from within those four categories, we would come up with about 6.4 million in savings. In some cases, that might be a full elimination of a program. In some cases, it might be a reduction. And in others, it might be no cut in a program because it seems either something we can't eliminate based on regulations or based on our strategic plan. But we would come up with $6.4 million approximately in reductions across those categories that would be supported by the referendum. I know that we talked a bit in the study session about alternatives to these reductions. And of course, should the referendum not pass and should we get into the budget process in the spring, the board could raise other priorities that you would direct me to look at as reductions. However, I believe as superintendent that as painful as it would be, these would be the least worst ways to close a deficit of that magnitude. And that's why I believe it's a recommendation that should we have to make these reductions, I could stand by seven months from now and tell you why I'm bringing you this recommendation. But once again, this would not be the vote on the budget. It's a vote to direct us to develop the budget, which of course, we would take very seriously. Finally, a brief reminder of this timeframe that lies ahead of us in developing this budget. In November, we will be looking at the finalized audit of the 2023, 2024 school year. That is done by our external audit firm. And it's important to begin the budget process with that so that the board is not just trusting me or our finance staff, but we have external auditors who are giving the board an independent statement of financial position. As I often point out, I am surprised and excited to work in an almost $400 million organization that has had three perfectly clean audits in a row without a single finding that the auditors have found discrepant with best practice. But we will start the process in November with looking at that external audit so the board really knows independently where our district stands. By the end of December, you will approve the actual local levy, which we'll be talking about in a subsequent agenda item in a moment. In January, we have a very important discussion where we give you the financial forecast and you set parameters for the budget development. In some ways, the resolution before you tonight is the beginning of those parameters. It's our marching orders in developing the budget for you to consider and act on in June. February and March, we have very important meetings with our principals and with the department heads to understand where they are in terms of everything from meeting special education requirements in IEPs to physical capacity in buildings. Because every building, every department is different and we annually need to make sure that we are staffing and budgeting at the predicted level of student need. We have to, by March 28th, notify staff who are going to be losing their current position. In April and May, we do a lot of really important analytic work to roll all of those individual school and department budgets into the macro budget that you review in the late spring. And then, of course, in June, before the end of that month, you ultimately approve the budget for the following school year. So you can see, this resolution that you have for you is way ahead of many of those things. But as I said at the outset, it's there because our community, significant segments of our community wanted as much clarity as could be provided before the referendum on November 5th so that they can make a decision about voting against or for that referendum with some level of knowledge of the results, the consequences that would follow if it is not approved. So Madam Chair, that is an overview of the resolution, which is on the agenda tonight, not for action, but for consideration and also obviously, community conversation as well.
Dr. Mervin.
I want a clarification. The way that this recommendation is written, and you know, as I said before, this is for all of us, this is so painful because we are currently providing the community what they said they wanted, what businesses and community members and parents said. These things are important so that kids who graduate from Rochester Public Schools are ready for the 21st century. This is who we want them to be. This is what the opportunities we want them to have. That said, the way the referendum is written now, and we're going to have to pass something. Dr. Pecelli, you said that if we pass this and then the referendum fails and we have to go back and look at what specific cuts will be made. Because all these different programs and positions are listed here, and I'm thinking especially about items number three and four, personnel and programs, would that mean that we would be obligated to cut or eliminate each of those?
I would bring you a budget that meets that criteria and then you would get the detail, greater detail than I'm able to give you right now for all the reasons I've explained. So we would give you a proposal that reflects these targets, but we would provide you, as we do every year, with the specific information. And then you, as a board, of course, would make your decisions on whether you wanted to direct revisions in that proposal, whether you wanted to make changes. But as you know, one of the things, when I got here in 2021, we began the process of the board setting budget parameters every January. And we have taken that super seriously. That's not just like fluff. We really see it as the guardrails of the budget development process. And it's not a simple thing to depart from that because there's a lot of assumptions that go into it. So essentially, this resolution frontloads some of those budget parameters for the reduction part of the budget. And then, yes, you would get a budget that reflects those broad reductions, but you would receive it with much more detail at that point.
Dr. Workman.
So I have a question. Obviously, if we have to close elementary schools and we have to redraw our attendance lines, that affects busing. So at what point is the latest that the transportation department can start to work on rerouting whatever needs to be rerouted? Because I know this past year has involved a considerable amount of work and effort on that department. And I'm very grateful for all of the extra hours they have spent doing this so that students can get to school and back to home safely. But I think that school closure would have to be relatively soon in our discussions in January, should the referendum not fail. What do you see that timeline? How do you see that timeline?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Workman. It's a critical point. That's why the resolution stipulates those schools would need to be identified by January.
Okay.
So they would be identified by January for really two reasons. First is for families' planning reasons. Families would have decisions to make. But second, for the reason that you articulate, we would have important work to do to redraw the attendance boundaries and to redesign the transportation routes so that we could then serve students in those new schools the following year. So we would do that. The question that was probably implied by my earlier remarks, but I'll just answer more bluntly. Why wouldn't you name the schools right now? The answer is, that is, of course, probably the most painful decision a school board can make. We would need to conduct not only extensive analysis, which we're not focused on right now because we are focused on providing information on the referendum, but in addition, public input. Not only do we want to conduct public input, but we're required to. We're required to hold a public hearing if you're closing a school. And so there would be important information that we would need to gather in order to make that recommendation. We have included in the resolution the criteria that we would use for that difficult decision. But it would be absolutely premature to be naming those schools at this point because I would not be confident in the analysis that I could give you tonight about which school should close in September of 2025. We would have a lot of homework to do before I'd want to make that recommendation to you. But I can tell you, we would have to close schools.
And then, one follow-up question, if I may? Sure. So currently now, how far away from schools are students bused? Or maybe how close? What's the walk zone now? And are we at the maximum walk zone required by or set by the Minnesota Department of Education?
We're not at the maximum. It's two. And every once in a while, I mix up my last school district and this where we are exactly at 1.5.
1.25 at elementary.
Yep.
1.5 at middle school. We do use 2.0.
That's right. Thank you. So hopefully, everybody heard that.
It would be 2.2 miles then for everybody.
Well, that would be a separate, yeah, there's not a separate, just outright transportation cut in this proposal. But as I mentioned at the outset, there is good reason to believe the deficit will be larger than $16.7 million. And so we might need to go significantly beyond what has been identified here. And so essentially, expanding the walk distance is another way to save transportation dollars, should that be what we actually needed to look at.
And I'm going to build on that conversation about the boundaries so that the community can really hear the impacts of the recommendations we would be making to the superintendent. By January 1st, if we pass this resolution, we would ask you to identify the schools to be cut. But not by January 1st would everyone in the district know whether they had been redistricted to a different school. So in terms of the consequences on our community, I think we've seen, and I'm doing this for the community to understand, I think we've seen how parents have had to react to the redistricting and the rerouting for our busing. This, while our transportation department would work as quickly as possible to put this together, this would probably not be information that would be available, definitely not in January, and perhaps not until later towards the end of the school year because it's one of the most complicated things that we do. So if you're talking about disruption to a system, closing a school, as you said, is perhaps the most difficult thing a district can do. Redrawing boundaries is probably number two. And we've just recently seen the adjustment that our families and even our students. And this wouldn't just be adjusting to move to something positive like new start times. This would involve moving some students, not by their choice, to a new school. So we've been asked, why aren't you naming the schools? Because I'd like to know if I'm affected. And I think Director Garcia said it very well at our study session. Assume that you are going to be affected if the referendum fails and we close three schools. Dare to say?
Yeah, well said.
Dr. Cook.
I don't really have a question here, but in the spirit of the activity that we're engaged in here, to try to provide as much transparency as we can on how we would aim to go about addressing the forecasted deficit for next school year, I just wanted to share the way that I've been thinking about this to make it as, just in the interest of transparency, maybe this will help people to understand the challenge. And what I did, I went back and looked at an email that I sent to the board in 2018, 2019 when new schools were being contemplated and boundaries were being considered for adjustment. I was relatively new to Rochester at the time and I had selected the home that I lived in based in large part on the school that was associated with the boundary for that neighborhood. And I was absolutely incensed at the idea that the expectations that I had for my children and for my family would be unsettled by this short-sighted decision of this governing body that I didn't know a whole lot about. And I operated from an assumption that surely something obvious was being overlooked, that something on the order of, you know, we were just looking at the projected deficit expresses a percentage amounts to 5.7% of the district's budget. I thought, surely, there's got to be another way. They must not appreciate how much disruption, how much negative impact to students these decisions would cause. And so I guess I want to share, that is not lost on me at all. It is, just sitting here talking about the idea of changing boundaries, I have an almost visceral reaction to the idea of changing up all these peer relationships that are incredibly important and developmentally important to unsettling the expectations of our community and breaking the binds of our neighborhoods and our school communities. And so I wanted to share why I would even consider that. And the reason is, my lodestar, and there's, as has been discussed, there's plenty of time to try to figure out in the event that this deficit, the projected deficit, needs to be addressed, exactly which cuts would be necessary. But my lodestar is trying as best I can to deploy the resources that this body has been entrusted with in a way that is going to center students' interests. And we continue to grapple with a literacy crisis in our community, in our state, nationwide. We're working hard at it. We're on the right path. But increasing class sizes by three or potentially more, that will absolutely have a negative impact on our students. It would absolutely have a negative impact on their future development, their ability to contribute to society, their ability to see themselves in a positive light, to their self-confidence, all of it. And so as between, you know, the disruption that would come from closing three schools, reshuffling all of the attendance boundaries, changing like my neighborhood last time, my school wasn't projected to close, but the neighborhood was going to move to a different school, it's incredibly unsettling for people. And I just wanted to share that I really get that. And I get that eliminating career and vocational training programs and computer science programs and auto mechanic programs and accounting and business and all of it, it's not something that I want to do or that I think anybody wants to do. But preserving as best we can our ability to meet the students with the most significant needs and maintaining the momentum we have built in addressing the literacy needs of our community would be my lodestar. And the last thing I just wanted to share is, shortly after I joined the board, one of the very first things that I did as part of the $7 million of reductions was to eliminate an innovative program that at the time I thought was a shining beacon of deeper learning and student engagement and empowerment. It developed entrepreneurial skills. It was experiential learning, I think, at its best. And I thought, was just really excited about it, both as an intellectual property attorney and as a community member, as a parent of students that I hoped would be able to participate in incubator EDU. I thought it was a fantastic program. I absolutely understood why it was rational to eliminate it in view of the district's other priorities at the time. But I share that as a reminder because this school system knows how to meet the needs of its students and provide enriching opportunities. But it is also, I think the governing body is duty-bound to be fiscal stewards of scarce public resources and balance its budget. And that is something that we will have to do. I'm committed to that. And as much as I would prefer, as much as I would strongly prefer that there were other options than the ones that have been identified, I am in support of this resolution because I do not believe that there is. And, yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Dr. Barlow.
Thank you, Director Cook. A couple things. One, I so appreciate the, and we can't see it often enough, the rationale for the resolution. see it often enough, the rationale for the resolution. It's not, we're not in the situation, and when I say "we," our community, this system is not in the situation we're in because of mismanagement, bad business practices. It was important, I believe, Dr. Pikel, to highlight the fact that for three consecutive years, we have, through independent audits, received a clean bill. Nothing to be found. There's nothing there. And I also think it important to, for the community to hear, as you already have said, they're not going to be left outside-looking, in sort of speak. They will be given an opportunity should the referendum fail. And so let me restack my statement. We hurt the community as a result of the failure of the last referendum. They said, "Had we known?" And we are answering that call by informing the community of what will happen. There is a deficit that will occur unless. And so I'm thankful that eyes wide open. The community will, will have an opportunity. I'm thankful that we, as a board, stewards entrusted by those who elect us, we have the opportunity to be given this challenge, to be visionary in anticipating what might happen, and these are things that we need to place before not only the community, but before the board itself and you as superintendent, so plans can begin to occur should the need arise, rather than waiting, well, we're going to wait and see, and then we'll go from there. So, so thank you for that. And it is my hope and belief that the community, and I respect the fact that there may be, there are those, going beyond there may be, there are those who just don't have the capacity to see another dollar spent or go toward an increase in, regarding their taxes. And, and it is unfortunate that both, and I'm assigning blame, but it is unfortunate that both the city and county, you know, are, interesting enough, they don't have to go through the process we go through. They can simply vote amongst themselves and, and pass that increase on to local taxpayers. I'm rather thankful that we have to, if you will, gain the trust of the community, actually justify the, the reason and rationale behind the request, which we're doing. And, and, and so, I believe the, the overwhelming majority will, will hear, understand, and, and agree that, not that you're right as superintendent, or that we're right as a board, but that this is the right thing, and this is the right time for the community to come together and say, "We need to get behind the Ignite Student Learning Initiative. Our kids are worth it." When I reference my experience at Bamber Valley, they're worth it. We can walk in each school and say, "They're worth it." Ideally, Director Cook, we'd like to have every parent, family, know that they could attend any school, even if their school were to somehow, for whatever reason, close, that their children would still receive the best of, the best educational services that, not only that which RPS can provide, but that really is a national standard. And I believe that's what we are on the cusp of developing and becoming, a, a district that sets the tone. We're not trying to be in the forefront. This is who we have become. And that's a good thing. You know, when we, when we hear about the family engagement, that's a good thing. I can't think of anything we're doing that is not a good thing, deserving to be built upon, deserving to be expanded and shared, and for all students to experience. And, and so, thank you for stating the hard facts, okay? Not a one of us likes it. There's a level of passion that we each have. My grandchildren haven't yet began to ask me, "Well, granddad, does this mean, or will that mean?" But they might, you know. My children have, "Well, Dad, does this mean, and does that mean?" But again, I'm going to remain hopeful. I believe we have every reason to be hopeful, but it is important that the truth be stated, that we not mince words, that we don't kind of, you know, tap it down and suggest, "Oh, this might happen, or this could happen." No, these are realities. And, and so, thank you. And I also appreciate the board, my, my peers, for, you know, sharing what we know to be true, the impacts, and in many ways, those were the driving agents that led us to run for election to begin with, our belief that this district was a, a district worth being a part of from the inside, and not just from the outside. So, thank you for, for the opportunity to have this before us, so we can consider action on it.
Dr. McLaughlin.
I just want to add to the discussion just really briefly, that I think this, so first of all, the referendum information that we've presented to the community, and I think it's a good example for our students, that we've learned and done some deeper learning into that issue as well. But that this presentation, this resolution, and what we presented here tonight, I think go a really long way to identifying information and dispelling misinformation that I think either is out in the community, or could be out in the community, and goes a long way to explaining why we're here, and how we got here, and what could happen next, that I think is very much to the advantage of our community. And I look forward to voting in favor of this resolution.
Dr. Garcia.
I would also like to support what my colleagues have shared, particularly on Directors Cook and Barlow. I think I was really struck after the last referendum by how much passion and energy came after the failure of the referendum. And I just kept thinking, like, if we had that all year round for our district, how much more, how much more phenomenal we would be, I think. And so, kind of to Director Barlow's point, you know, a lot of the, the community said, "If we had known." Well, we do know, because it happened last year. And the thing that I hope that people do not take from what I said in the, the study session was, I don't want people to let the lack of specificity, you know, we're not identifying the specific school. I don't want people to let the lack of specificity get in the way of fighting for the whole district, because that's all of our students. And very much like Director Cook mentioned, yes, increasing class sizes by three, three or so students maybe doesn't seem like a lot, but it has such vast rippling effects on not just the academic piece for those elementary students who would have to move, or those educators who would have to accommodate larger class sizes. We'll feel it all over the place. Families are going to feel it all over the place. It's going to affect the entirety of our district, not just the school, but like, the boundaries of our district. We went through it last year, and we're telling you again, it's going to come, if, insert political horrors, blink. And so I also am going to join my colleagues in voting in the affirmative for this resolution, not because I want to make these decisions, because y'all, I am exhausted. We've been voting since I joined the board about masks, no masks, in-person, hybrid, asynchronous, interim superintendent, new superintendent, like, last referendum, this referendum. And I feel like I would love for there to just be a time where we can make a vote that's this impactful and long-lasting, and have it be long-lasting, like positively long-lasting. And so I truly, like Director Barlow shared, I truly hope that this does not come to pass. And I think Director McLaughlin was the one who coined the term, like, "Assume it's you." So, please, assume it's going to be you, and do the fighting that's necessary to prevent this having to come, to become our reality, because I would like for it to not be. I want this district to be not just having to recover from decisions like this every year. I want it to, I want to set ourselves on a path to astronomical success, and just have it be like smooth sailing. And my hope is that this, in this November, or in the next couple of months, that we will see that.
Can I just add something really, in reflecting to what Dr. Garcia said? I, I agree that, "Assume it's you," but also recognize that collectively, we can take action in November to do what's best for our district and our community.
Dr. Workman.
Assume it's you, but understand that if the community supports this, then it will not be you. If you're thinking of it purely from, "What is impacting me?" What I see is, having been a teacher for a while, and on the board for a while, is, and Director Cook, you said it so eloquently, is the lack of stability every single year. What's going to happen next? Is my child going to have to change schools? Are the class sizes going to be bigger? This program is being offered now in high school, but will it be there when my child gets to high school? I mean, just the, having to contemplate the unknown every single year is exhausting. And it's really exhausting for us to have to make these decisions. But what I'm thankful for is that the community has given us direction in terms of what they want our graduates to know and be able to do when they leave Rochester Public Schools. And now is the opportunity for them to support that, because without the, that support, it's not going to happen.
And just one final observation. Voting actually started, opened this past Friday, and I had cast my vote Friday, probably at 10 o'clock or so. And I'm very encouraged to see so many seniors there, already actively voting. No, I didn't ask them if they were voting for, nor asking them, soliciting a vote, but it was, the process is occurring, and no one should, should wait. I would hope that many of our viewing, audience members will take the time and, and go out and vote now. Vote early. Don't wait till the 7th, the 5th?
Yeah. Please, yeah, don't do that.
Tuesday, the 5th. But early voting has already started.
Well, I too appreciate the direction that the superintendent has given us to consider, so that we can be on the record, as our community asked us to be, about the consequences if the referendum fails. And I am not surprised, but I am pleased to be among colleagues who I think will stick to their decision. I think, you know, when you have seven people with seven opinions, I think the community could think, "Well, we could change their minds." Might take a vote to, to set these parameters for the superintendent, but when push comes to shove, and they actually have to vote for a budget, they're really not going to vote in all of these cuts. And I just think we, I, I think you have to hear the voices of everybody here, is nobody wants to make these cuts. But we, we recognize the reality of the situation, which is a balanced budget is necessary. There's a $19.4 million deficit. It either gets filled with new revenues, or we make the budget reductions to fill that deficit, or to close that deficit. And I know that this, this conversation, I said, I started the meeting by crying. I thought, this is the point I would be crying. But I want to focus a little bit on what a successful referendum brings us, because as we said in the resolution, if the Ignite Student Learning Operating referendum is approved, this resolution is automatically rescinded. So we go back to square one in developing our budget. It also brings us stability for 10 years. And I've said this before, and I can't miss the opportunity to say it again. I've had students in this district since the year 2000. We have never had stability for one year. It's what Director Workman said, "What's going to be cut the next year?" I went back and looked at a chart that I have been keeping for 24 years, of the budget cuts, year after year. We've never made a budget cut this big. And the budget cuts that I experienced when my kids were in school, I felt at the time were devastating. And they look back on it, and remembered the year when, and they are now grown, and, and out there, successful, but they remember the conversations with their friends and with their teachers. This out scopes all of those experiences by multiple factors. But it also gives us, if a successful referendum gives us stability for 10 years. So we won't have to be having these conversations. We can build on the strategic plan that, as you mentioned, Director Marvin, our community, I love our graphic at the back of the room, our community told us that that's the direction they wanted us to take for our students. So, while this is a difficult conversation, and will be a difficult vote, because nobody wants to see them come to fruition, we are doing what is our responsibility as a governing board, but we are also doing what is our responsibility as a district, to educate the community about this referendum vote. This is not the end of the conversation. The district is going to put out a lot more information between now and November 5th. Please take advantage of it. Please share it with your friends, so that you can be fully informed before you go to the ballot box and make your decision. May I, Superintendent? Colleagues?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay. This will be back for vote at our next meeting. All right. We have a few action items. 9.1 is the certification of proposed school district property tax levy payable 2025. I'll read the resolution, and then we can open the floor for information and discussion following a motion and second. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 535 Rochester, Minnesota, being a school district in Olmsted County and Wabashaw County, Minnesota, that there be a proposed school tax levy upon all taxable property in said school district in an amount equal to the maximum levy limitation provided by the Minnesota Department of Education. And be it further resolved that the payable 2025 property tax levy and 2024, 2025 school district budget will be discussed, and the public will be allowed time to comment on the issue of the property tax levy and school district budget, at a school board meeting to be scheduled on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in Room 137 of the Edison Bill, Edison Administration Building, 615 7th Street Southwest, Rochester, Minnesota. And be it further resolved that the final levy will be adopted at the regular school board meeting scheduled on Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. And be it further resolved that the county auditors be notified of these dates and times, and that notices be published as required by the Commissioner of Revenue. So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion. Heard about this at our last meeting, and had the details, and this, again, is the maximum levy limitation. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution has been approved. Our second action item are the- Our second action item are the resolutions for the MSBA Delegate Assembly. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the submission of the following resolutions to the MSBA Delegate Assembly. Be it resolved, MSBA urges the legislature to amend the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act to authorize school districts and other units of local government to require the full legal name and address of individuals submitting Minnesota Data Practices Act requests. This information could potentially be deemed private data for future data requests if that was the reason for the recent change in statute to not require the specific information. Urges the legislature to adopt MSBA Resolutions 4.034 and 4.035 introduced in 2017 and 2021 to assist in retrieving excessive costs associated with data requests. Two, be it resolved, MSBA urges the legislature to amend the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act to authorize school districts and other local government units to charge a reasonable fee for responding to data requests for public government data that the requester clearly intends based on their business model and business practices to regularly collect and monetize for commercial purposes.
Move approval?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we need to make friendly amendments for that three? That's smack dab in the middle of that.
I didn't mention that. I'm, that friendly amendment, we'll get rid of the three.
It's a typo.
Yeah, it's a typo. They'll make sure they don't send it to MSBA with that.
You got it.
Anything else? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution has been approved. And thank you to our legislative committee for their work. All right. Policy Committee Recommendations, August and September. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the recommendations of the Policy Committee for the policies and procedures listed. Policy 413, harassment and violence. Policy 507, corporal punishment. Policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students. Policy 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities. Policy 514, bullying prohibition policy. Policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. Procedure 515A, protection and privacy of pupil records. Policy 516, student medication. Procedure 516A, student medication, non-emergency prescription medications. Procedure 516C, student medication overnight field trip. Policy 522, Title IX, sex nondiscrimination. Policy 524, Internet acceptable use and safety policy. Policy 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. Policy 606.5, library materials. Policy 607, organization of grade levels. Policy 608, instructional services, special education. Policy 616, school district system accountability. Policy 620, credit for learning. Policy 806, crisis management. And Procedure 806A, crisis management.
Move approval? Second.
It has been moved and seconded. So to kick off the discussion, board members, just to remind you that all of the changes in these policies come from changes in Minnesota law from the recent legislative session, and they came to us through MSBA model policy changes. And we're required to make all of these changes because they reflect changes in statute. However, our, well, I should say, moreover, our policy 208 allows the board to approve these changes at a single board meeting because of a legal change over which the school board has no control. So that is why we are able to look at them all in one meeting. And then we have our briefing document. Director Workman?
So I'll start with Policy 413. Purpose of Policy 413, harassment and violence, is to maintain a learning and working environment free from harassment and violence on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex, marital status, familial status, status with regard to public assistance, sexual orientation, gender identity or expression or disability. MSBA model policy update of Policy 413 adds reasonable force language and corrects the legal reference.
Policy 507, corporal punishment, limitations on use of corporal punishment and prone restraint upon a student. MSBA model policy update of Policy 507 adds reasonable force language and corrects the legal reference.
The school district desires to participate in the Enrollment Options Program, Open Enrollment, established by Minnesota Statute Section 124D.03. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the application and exclusion procedures used by the school district in making said determination. MSBA model policy update to Policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students removes school readiness plus and adds school or parent's choice.
514, you want me to do 512 as well?
We're on 512 now.
Yeah, but mine's not highlighted. The recommended edits to the purpose statement of Policy 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities, remove the words official student publication and quote, official school publication, and replace them with quote, school-sponsored media. The amended purpose statement then reads, "The purpose of this policy is to protect students' rights to free speech and production of school-sponsored media and activities while at the same time balancing the school district's role in supervising student publications and the operation of public schools." MSBA model policy update to Policy 512 adds the quote, student journalist law. The Policy 514, the purpose of bullying prohibition states, "A safe and civil environment is needed for students to learn and attain high academic standards and to promote healthy human relationships." The MSBA model policy 514 update revises Article Roman numeral 5A, clarifying the posting requirements and updating other sections.
Policy 515, the school district recognizes its responsibility in regard to the collection, maintenance, and dissemination of pupil records and the protection of the privacy rights of students as provided in federal law and statutes. In Policy 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. MSBA model policy update of 515 adds an explanatory note for directory information and new law and definition regarding judicial officials. We also added email to the list of directory information that could be released for parents. And we also updated, in Procedure 515A, which is the next procedure, updated the text to correct the name of registration and record. And Form 515A1 is updated to include parent guardian email address as directory information which is eligible to opt out from being released.
Policy 516, student medication. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the provisions that must be followed when administering non-emergency prescription medication to students at school and school activities. MSBA model policy update of Policy 516 adds new statutory provisions and rearranges sections for clarity. Procedure 516A, student medication, non-emergency prescription medications, is a companion procedure to Policy 516. The changes in reference, in references correspond with changes in Policy 516. Procedure 516C, student medication, overnight field trips, a companion to Policy 516, has minor language updates for clarification.
Policy 522, Title IX, sex nondiscrimination policy and grievance procedure are drafted to meet the minimum requirements in the 2024 Title IX Final Rule. The current language in this policy is being completely replaced by new language drafted by our legal counsel. Policy 524, MSBA model policy updates adds a new title and cellphone provision to the Internet acceptable use and safety policy. The purpose of this policy is to establish requirements, expectations, and guidelines for access to the use of electronic technology.
The use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds, Policy 532 states. The purpose of this policy is to describe the appropriate use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove, if necessary, a student with an individualized education program, or IEP, from school grounds. MSBA model policy 532 update adds school resource officer language. Policy 606.5, library materials, is a new MSBA model policy. We are required to implement the provisions related to the new Minnesota law on selection and reconsideration of library materials. This policy has been reviewed and supplemented by legal counsel. The Office of Academics is working on a procedure to implement this policy.
Policy 607, organization of grade levels. The purpose is to address the grade level organization of schools within the school district. MSBA model policy 607 defines a documentation that satisfies the minimum and maximum age requirements pre-K to grade 12. Policy 608, instructional services, special education. MSBA model policy 608 update adds quote, child with a disability provisions. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the position of the school board on the need to provide special education services to some students in the school district.
Policy 616, school district system accountability. The MSBA model policy update removes world's best workforce language and replaces it with quote, comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. The purpose of this policy is to focus public education strategies on a process that promotes higher academic achievement for all students and ensures broad-based community participation in decisions regarding implementation of the Minnesota K-12 academic standards and federal law. Policy 620, credit for learning, recognizes student achievement that occurs in post-secondary enrollment options and other advanced enrichment programs. MSBA model policy 620 update adds PSEO dates and weighted grades provision.
Crisis Management Policy 806 recognizes student achievement that occurs in post-secondary enrollment options and other advanced enrichment programs. MSBA model policy 806 update adds a note about the Permissive Cardiac Emergency Response Plan. Procedure 806A, the companion to the above policy, is updated with a new 2024-2025 crisis management template from the MSBA model policy 806 updates.
Thank you, Director Workman, for putting that together. Board members, any questions?
I did have one about the new policy 606.5. And I recognize that there's a MSBA model policy and that the statutory change requires reporting to the Department of Education about any reviews and the, that are implemented under that policy of library materials and the outcome of the review. But it seemed to me there were a lot of choices possible within the model policy from MSBA. And given that, I wonder if this seems like one that would be more sensible to have removed from this sort of expedited approval process and give ourselves a chance to review it in a little bit more depth. In particular, I thought the establishment of a new review committee for library materials, separate from the reconsideration committee that's a standing committee of the board that already exists for review of curriculum material, is something that the board ought to consider, whether that, the existing reconsideration committee would be a sensible forum for these types of challenges as well. And then also, I thought that the policy should probably make clear that any reports on reviews by the review committee are reported through a, an action at a board meeting. Could be on a consent agenda or something, but those were, those were two things that I thought were consistent with the, both the model policy and the statutory change. And so for those reasons, I thought that's one that we could consider in greater depth. But if the policy committee has any additional insight on those observations, maybe we could discuss it now.
So do I hear that you want to amend the, you want to have a discussion about amending the content of the policy in an area where we have some leeway to adjust?
Correct.
Is that something that could instead be reflected in procedures? Or does it change the language of the policy?
The policy itself sets out the, identifies the membership of the review committee, unlike the Policy 606 for review of curriculum materials, where that's set out in the procedure that accompanies Policy 606.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So it would, it would, it couldn't be handled through a procedure. It would, what I'm suggesting would require a slight modification to the proposed Policy 606.5.
So I would think that in order to, we could do one of two things. We could talk about the amendments to the policy, but I would hesitate for us to make amendments here at the table without then having to run it back through with the chief academic officer and the curriculum department to see what those impacts might be. I think what we could do is if you wanted to amend the resolution, offer an amendment to remove 606.5, and then we could vote on the amendment. And then if successful, we could move on.
Okay, I would move to remove Policy 606.5 from, from this action item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And just so we're clear, you are looking, because you would like to make recommendations on amending the policy in terms of the membership of the review committee, that's at Section 5E?
Yes, and also in section...
It's like I, review and report, I think, maybe, too.
Yeah, the review and report. It's just a minor.
I, I, sorry.
Change to make clear that that information would be included in board material. The report to commissioner.
Yep. Section. Section I. So after voting, the review committee will submit a brief written report to the superintendent, and you'd like to add something that requires that to be?
By board action in a public meeting.
Okay. So the report would go to the commissioner only after?
Board action.
Board action.
But Madam Chair, if I understood the motion correctly, to which I seconded, was we were going to not vote on this tonight.
Right.
It would be pulled and referred to the policy committee. And that would be the appropriate time to.
Right.
I think, just for clarification, what we're voting on right now is to whether or not to remove this policy from this particular vote tonight, and not necessarily the details.
Right. Well, I was giving Director Cook the opportunity to say why he wanted one. So we didn't lose that in the conversation.
I, may I ask one question?
Yes.
So this has, this is the MSBA policy and has also been reviewed by our legal counsel who has also added some additional material. Do you know off the top of your head what additional material was added by legal counsel? And perhaps that doesn't make a whole lot of difference to the vote right now, but for me, I'd kind of like to know where we stand. I'm glad you've got all the, the new language and strikeouts and everything in front of you.
I do. Without knowing all the details of what Director Cook would want, I would say that the appointment of the review committee and the membership of the review committee came from the MSBA model policy. And the procedure for the review and report to the commissioner came directly from MSBA model policy.
Okay. But our legal counsel didn't have any particular?
They didn't, they haven't changed or agreed to that, no. So, and I don't know how, I don't know what of that came from statute directly either, the language of the review and report. So it would give us a chance to investigate that.
Just to, one, one minor addition to that, Chair Nathan, is that the model policy actually specifies that the review committee would include a library media specialist, which is not in the proposed policy.
Well, actually, it is in Section E. The licensed library media specialist must be on the review committee and must administer the procedures for reconsideration. It's in the opening paragraph.
Oh, how about that? Oh, it's just not enumerated. I see. Okay.
Right. Because the statute elevated the role of the library media specialist to being more than just a member of the committee.
Oh, okay. That's helpful. Thanks.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second on the amendment. Are we ready to vote on the amendment to remove this from the list? Yes? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we have an amendment to remove 606.5. Do we have any other questions on any other?
any other questions on any other policies or procedures? Director McLaughlin?
I had a similar question about policy five twenty-two, in the sense, and I, I kind of look at it the same way Director Cook looked at six oh six point five, is that most of these other changes appear to be procedural changes based on statutory change. But six oh six point five talks about it being a new policy, and five twenty-two appears to be a new policy that, including language that was drafted by our legal counsel. That doesn't seem like a, as much of a technical statutory change as some of the other proposed changes here do.
Well, the rewrite of policy five twenty-two is because of the federal Title IX rule. So it, it wasn't state statutory change, it was federal Title IX rule change. So what's in five twenty-two is because of the changes in the federal.
And federal versus, here's your time, federal versus state. That's the difference.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything about the new language drafted by our legal counsel, or have we already reviewed that in detail?
Yes. So the MSBA rewrote policy five twenty-two in its entirety because the Title IX rules required an entire rewrite. Our legal counsel recommended that instead of using the detail that MSBA gave us, that we use this, what he called the minimum requirements standard, in part because the Title IX final rules are subject, still subject to a lot of court actions, and that might change. But the language that is provided, in addition to, so the language is on the first page, but then it also has new language for the, the grievance procedure. That's really the significant piece of the change in Title IX final rules with regard to policy five twenty-two. Those, and, and we also confirm that with our Human Resources Director, that all of the minimum language and the grievance procedure was the minimum amount needed to comply with the federal, the new federal rule.
Got it. I withdraw my request to make a modification then, with that for further clarification.
Any others? Hearing none. All those in favor of all of the policies, with the exception of six oh six point five, which has been removed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The resolution has been approved. And we will, Director Cook, if you think you need to send your comments in writing to the policy committee, do, and then we'll take it up and check it with all the right sources and bring it back.
Happy to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. Our next item is other business. The question, ten point one, the questions submitted by board members before the meeting and related answers are available in our assembly document. The current version of the A B C D is available in the agenda item. Are there any agenda items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? Hearing none. Our upcoming board meeting dates are October eighth at five thirty, a regular meeting, October fifteenth at five thirty, a study session, October twenty-second at five thirty, a special session on field trip fees with a, a regular meeting immediately following, and on November, November twelfth at five thirty, a regular meeting. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-seven PM.